Welcome to the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School and School Committee meeting. February 12th, 2022, Governor Baker signed it to a law. Certain COVID-19 measures started during the state of emergency. Since there's an extension until July 15th, 2022. Governor Baker's extension, I hope not be allowed physically access this school committee meeting. This meeting will be hybrid. Please join me in the pledge. But the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution. Public comments. Comments can be emailed in advance at 6:30 PM start time to lreansmedia.tech.us. All comments will be recorded to the record. And all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails you receive during the meeting will be mentioned at following. So any public comment. And be heard. Who will minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I have the approval of April 13th, 2022 minutes of the annual organization.
Questions, comments? What call vote? Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
You're not enough today.
But.
April 13th, minutes of the public hearing on the FY 23 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I hope you're through with April 13th.
Discussion. Questions. Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. It is. Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Minutes of the Whittier School Committee meeting.
Mr. Chairman. I have the approval of April 13th, Whittier School Committee meeting.
Questions, comments? Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Yes.
Meetings of the executive session for April 13th. Second. Questions, comments? Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
The treasures report for April. Who's treasure? Questions, comments? Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Hi. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Old business, there is no old business posted. Employers of communication.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, Superintendent Lincoln, all of the school committee members. Girls' Cross has gone two for six so far, improving every game. They've had some tough late game losses, but are getting better every day. The boys' lacrosse teams have a great season. They are currently sitting at nine for four. Four freshmen started many first and second year contributions. The varsity softball team has actively received some of the best players with a record seven three overall. Varsity baseball team too, they currently have six five overall, or five for one. Boys and girls track teams have some amazing performances this season. Their new track is where the boosters and all the help they've been getting from these has made the great comeback. Student teams have a lot of good things to say, and I think we'll keep that forever. Here are some of the highlights. New school records. Two mile and the girls sprinting set at the state relays. And the boys, four guys, the relay on the first break, they're top twenty all time best for years. Chess club is still going strong, over twenty-five members attended last week. And they're in the middle of their second tournament, have many new players. Drama club watched two new schools come back the way and set up the opera. While taking great so the seniors can prepare for the senior talent shows. On May 13th, those USA students who participated in March 17th district conference received gold, silver, bronze medal along with all students who participated in April 14th. Twenty-nine state conference. Leadership since. Our leadership and skills champions will head to Marlboro for a award ceremony. The youth chapter has received a models of excellence award for their participation in the nine eleven. Which illustrated the workplace skills aspect of the skills USA. Twenty-four schools nationwide qualified for this level of recognition. Students will be competing in Atlanta, Georgia, June 20th to 25th for the national skills USA conference. Winners and attendees should be announced on May 13th. The environmental club continues to take care of the tower gardens of four or six in the poets. The poets then was able to eat or break cilantro going to the tower garden and one of the dishes we had lunch. The turtles are doing all the soup we handed back to the head start program to release in the Parker River. Interact club has planted their sunflower beast started Tuesday. Everything goes well as they planned. They will have beautiful sunflowers to come back to school in September. Club's currently working to host the favorite grocery club to lunch, May 24th. Journalism club has begun to work on the graduation edition of Wildcats magazine. They plan on sending out a form to seniors to ask them to share their favorite memories, advice from seniors, threats, favorite classes, embarrassing moments. Also have a short story on awards night, trace personal beer, skills USA update and prom graduation. Student government celebrated teachers during the first week of May for teacher appreciation. The club celebrate the school's hardworking teachers with announcement coffee and paper. August party work, planning the June sixth election for new officers during school year will be elected. Student government has additional approval to hold a homecoming dance in the fall, more in hotel. At the April 28th multicultural club meeting, seniors spoke about her won't prepare this country of Ghana. Brought authentic fabrics and fashions to show. Club learned that her family speaks sweet at home and that her father is the main focus of the family. On Thursday, May 12th, the freshman will speak about visiting him in the public and share about her life experience there. The robotics team has received first robotics equipment to build student first robotic skills and are currently building pistol chassis platforms. Many is mental awareness, awareness month. Peer, peer love will be more, friend and max kindness. Key club held a successful chain course competition last month. The freshman class came fourth with eighty-nine points. Softball is in third with eight hundred eighty-five. Juniors in second, two thousand five hundred fifty-two points. And the juniors in first place with seven thousand three hundred thirty-six points. Ninety-three dollars was donated to the winning class and a hundred seventy was donated to Sweet Paw's rescue program. As the school year comes to close, they're starting to range for where the history of the history starts next year. Your book went out to press, should be in transit this week or next. Students have started photographing juniors participating in spring sports. Thank you.
Do you quite have a report?
Any questions for Ryan?
I don't think they write much anything out. Building and student faculty, staff to faculty alike. Great job.
Thank you. Does this your last report for us?
Yeah.
He's out of breath.
Me, ready?
Yep.
And where are you going?
Um, just standing workforce there, you have a job right now. I'm gonna go off the. I'm gonna finish, associate's.
I have the tech already.
I have forty-six I could be back.
It's waiting to be recently changed.
Sixty-four.
Now we're almost done.
Look up there.
Congratulations.
Yeah, like this semester.
Yeah.
Good for you, Ryan.
I hear the token of our appreciation, Ryan.
Thank you.
So thank you for, for the entire year, doing amazing work for us and giving amazing reports. And wishing nothing but the best tonight, I'm pretty sure you'll be still USA and.
Nationals, yeah.
Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. I was planning on going, but didn't get home until Saturday and actually.
Long as they have the paperwork, we're all set.
Thank you guys for sub two days.
Thank you, Ryan. Good luck.
It's not the right size if you want something different. The store is right there.
I heard you got fresh, you're starting to get a little small.
Congratulations and baby for everything.
Thank you.
So I think this still a game, it wants to already start talking about next year and next year's students.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members, and thank you again, Ryan, for a great. Time this year, as well as, I have the pleasure to introduce our next rep to the school committee. And another superstar, Taylor LeBlanc, carpentry student from Hable.
Nice.
She's an A student, a cheerleader. She's involved in all the Whittier events. She's a regular at all the events as well. A bright future, and she's already on co-op. And I don't want to embarrass her, I told her not, I wouldn't embarrass her just yet. But you want to talk about your co-op a little, what do you want? Go ahead.
Hi, I work at Inspired Closets, I'm in Carpentry and it's at Ward Hill Industrial.
So congratulations, another superstar for you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And from Hable to boot, Hable. To make sure.
Superintendent, two words.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Seventy percent.
Tonight before you, I also personnel actions. I have some hires of an English instructor for next year, English reading instructor, two English reading instructors. A math instructor and a administrative assistant, assistant principals right now. Also, I have vacation boot camp hires. I have learning lots for an meter. I have April break, early college prep class. The math grade ten spring after school program. I have the ELL curriculum, ELL teacher to work with curriculum teams. I have advisory team members. I have sped teacher to work with curriculum teams. I have CTI summer programs. We discussed this, we're gonna do adult programming this summer. See this quite a few programs that will be running this summer. Our summer MCAS enrichment program. Our summer twenty twenty-two employment. Employability experience. I also have some resignations of an engineering instructor, of a teacher coach and of a math instructor. Budget update, as of today, Merrimack, Georgetown, Newbury, Raleigh and Ipswich have approved our budget. Upcoming town, town budget meetings are Wesley Berry on May 14th, Salisbury, May 16th and Groblin on May 23rd. Upcoming meetings with the cities which are usually later in the process. We have Amesburg on May 17th, Newburyport on May 19th and April on June 6th. MCAS update on May 17th, eighteen grade ten students will be taking math and it's grade ten MCAS exam. As note fifteen, seniors took the AP calculus and AP exam on Monday evening. I want to put a special little shout out to our math instructor, Elizabeth Texera. She worked tirelessly with new students to weekends, nights, whatever it took to try to prepare the students for the exams. So I really want to thank her for that effort. Also biology MCAS exams. We are having those on June 7th and 8th for freshmen, so it's a little bit of the year. I think the next week will be out of school. So we're hoping the students are ready and prepared for that exam. On Thursday, April 14th, we hosted a practice budget meeting with the towns of Salisbury, Ipswich. On Thursday, April 14th, we hosted a lunch with the fidelity foundation. And we're looking to possibly work with each other on. On Thursday, April 14th, I attended a remote meeting for the Marine Service Technology Advisory Board with Whittier's desk and liaison. And again, we're hoping to open that program up this fall. Doing a couple other campaigns and hopefully we'll see the progress. On Thursday, May 5th, I attended the remote meeting with Des and Commissioner. He provided the COVID update, emergency license information. And formed us up the COVID testing program continued into the end of the year. On Friday, May 6th, I attended a road meeting with a whole group discussion of problem of practice quality systems of support working. The mouthful, but this is a pilot program to look at our vocational programs instead of doing a tiered focus review. I really want to thank you, you have to cross the vocational coordinator for taking the lead in this program. It's a pilot program, we're hoping we can provide Desi with some information about how it worked, how we can improve this process. I want to thank the Whittier Tech Educational Foundation for a wonderful Kentucky Derby party at the Renaissance Club. I also want to thank the culinary staff, especially Mr. Cervetti for the desserts and Ms. Perrin for the desserts that they provided. It was a fabulous night and we were able to raise money for this foundation. So and I want to send a special thanks out to Kara Cosmas and Tia Grabber. They are really the heart, soul of that, that foundation and really worked very hard to make sure it happened with COVID. Just weren't sure if we were able to make it happen and maybe get out of the way and I truly appreciate that. As far as the building project goes, we have hired left field as our OPM and we're now going through the process of hiring our tech. Get five applications to review along with MSBA. I want to thank Chairman Brett Murphy and member Dick Early for taking the time to review those applications. Get online with MSBA last week. So we, along with MSBA, have narrowed the architects down to three that we wanted to interview further. And since that meeting, one has withdrawn their application. So as a result, on May 17th, we will be reviewing two architect forms along with MSBA and make a determination to continue moving forward with as our architect. As we move forward in the process, I think it's imperative that we look to hire a consultant that will assist us in the building process. That understands the complexities of regional agreements, legislative action and in the MSBA process beyond services of our OPM. I hope to bring you something next month for. A quick COVID update, we are definitely seeing a hot ticket cases. As of right now, I have ten staff that are out with COVID and I think I have thirty students that are positive. It's a lovely email to staff yesterday recommending that they wear a mask for a period of time. Certainly not a mandate, but a recommendation. Because the positive cases were coming in fast and furious yesterday. I will say I didn't receive a single positive staff case today, so hopefully we have helped hit our P. And I need a school choice vote for tonight. At this time, I do not believe we have any seats available for school choice students. I would ask that we allow students that are currently enrolled that may move to be able to stay here under the school choice program.
Can you repeat that again, please?
I, we do not have any seats for choice students.
Correct.
What I'm asking is that if a student is currently enrolled at Whittier Tech, that they do not have to transfer out if they move out of our district.
Thank you.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Principal Agans.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members, once again, I'm up here. I have the, if you can believe it, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three calendar. Just some highlights, just to go over, our new teachers will report August twenty-three, twenty-four. And then back to school, all teachers, the twenty-ninth, and then all the kids, the thirty-first of August, just to give you a little idea. On October 6th, we have a meet the teacher night. We wanted to get more parent involvement, so our parents gonna come hopefully and guardians and kind of go through the routine and the schedules of our kids. So that's gonna be on October 6th, as well as our open house, your pencil in our open house, November 6th. October 6th, sorry, was to meet the teacher and November 6th is the open house. Yes, slide down to the, the next page, graduation June 1st. And then the last day of school will be exactly for the kids, June 13th. And that's firing stone days that we built at the five stone mess. So any questions on the calendar for next year? And you can see on the bottom, hopefully we don't have to do any changes. But we put there, the calendar is subject to change only because of what we've been through the last two and a half, three years with COVID, so. You know, we changed that thing left and right a couple of years ago. Any questions?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Stay healthy.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Make a motion to accept this full calendar as presented. Any questions, comments? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Got you. Say hello to business manager, Kara Cosmas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. I have a request in the cabinet for an E and D transfer. I'm requesting a transfer this year in the amount of nine hundred thousand from our excess and deficiency to our stabilization fund. At the end of FY twenty-one, the Department of Revenue certified one million twenty-six thousand and five dollars in Whittier's excess and deficiency funds. After this transfer, we will still have one hundred and twenty-six thousand five dollars in E and D. But I do anticipate that this account will again be replenished by funds that will remain in the operating budget at the end of this fiscal year. So in order to accomplish this, I'm requesting that the school committee increase the FY twenty-two general fund operating budget to twenty-seven million, four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. The revenue for this increase will come from the excess and deficiency account and will result in no changes to our member municipality assessments.
No chore fun anymore?
No.
Any questions? Who finished his presentation? Second. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yo.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaveri.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havil.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Two. Two equal agenda. Longest updates. Evaluation.
For you tonight, I'm giving you an update on evaluation and if. Any questions? Answer them and I'm looking for constructive feedback. So that can be from.
Well, that's a question. A part of the new teachers call, I was reading in your, your report. So you have a mentoring program to help the teachers along. Is that something that's ongoing or?
So we had, we had a, had a drive coach to the last several years. She has designed, she's taken on a leadership position. So I think it's something that we're definitely gonna have to look at, how we've done it in the past and how we're gonna move forward with it. And right now, I'm soliciting feedback from the industries and teachers to see what the best path we need to be. It's really important right now to be able to support new teachers in education and be able to want them to stay here and grow here at Whittier Tech. So that will be an ongoing effort.
Sure, that's good. Right, next question. Page one. We're not full year eight.
So right now, we're in the fourth year of our AP course, but we're also just received a grant from Virtual High School. So we will be doing virtual high schools with about thirty or so students. And again, Ms. Texera, who is doing the AP, has been really instrumental in making finding students that might be interested in these courses and overseas. So right now, I believe it's just a one-year grant and we'll see how it goes and see how, you know, how successful it is. I believe that the early college programs, we're just providing students opportunities. This is what I choose to pursue. Don't want to hold any student back.
Yes. These further in the other stuff about create technology programs. When you anticipate this?
So Mr. wants to just send to you, we follow that, you know, I don't really think online. Jesse, a moment to me for the advisory board, I want to make sure the advisory board is actually involved in the process of us to put a map in this program. They actually didn't have needed to be quiet, which is not one of my strengths. So if you need, last about twenty-five minutes to an hour, their advisory board members will ask questions about the program and what they thought and help budget and help hiring. So we are hoping, we just have to do the exhaust system in the direction of auto tech. So we're hoping to get a few bullets. Mr. Man, you have to marry. Yes. We're just about there.
Very, that'll be housed in our.
I would say we're taking over a couple of ways.
Subcommittee force. Executive. Question personnel.
Is there a baby candy we'd like to review a book with you?
Sure.
I have, I have answered Thursday the nineteenth, that's three talks, we do have three meetings. Thursday nineteenth, yes.
You want me to?
Chair will be holding, if you would, I'd like. Have it here. It's up to you, if you hibernate or coming here. Guys.
Tom is here.
Yeah, we'll talk, okay, if anyone can, we'll set up a high.
Okay.
Let operations, Mr. Tucker.
We got two things that the only real action we had was all elected. Chairman, once again. Chairman once again, and we had an update from my file. A lot of things for all schools, for making children, things of that nature. So that's his report here, but I did miss one thing though, is I should have known when they did early. Because he wasn't here.
I gave you again, Paul.
I take it, take it for you. Congratulations, Paul. Policy, Mr. Early. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we met this evening, we reviewed there for policy represented by the M A S C. Basically legal recent commission, etc. We have two of the three. You know, with the M A S C. It's basically a gun treatment rate, policy harassment, retaliation, sexual harassment, it's a simple safety. So we'll have those sent out to the full committee and they'll be here. Uh, June, in fast track. Yes. On some committees. We assign. There's a couple people that were on the base, so the assignment in some place that I saw. Being like this. Okay, but you know. Talk about it, but I didn't. Salary. Mr. Early?
We have a issue we'll be talking about in a little while.
Um, we need to have a salary evening, I do need to. Set up the negotiations with the industry years. Sales director.
Would like to do that.
Do that one, say the. Do a three o'clock and two.
Yeah, yeah, all right. It's up to you, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Early?
So we'll set it up ten minutes later for the eighteen.
Just show me.
January sixth. Three. Two. Meeting dates. The next regular school meeting, June eighth. Two, two weeks, thirty P M.
That's right here, who knows?
Second, it's seven. Seven.
It's.
No, they are timed.
So usually seven. Business, there's no business posted. Executive session. Level three, three, it's here. We have motion to enter to executive session, to exactly collective body session. Discuss strategy with respect to collective body. W R E A, teaching, yes, the whole committee may have a detrimental effect on the position of the public body. And the chair so declares and upon completion of the executive session, people that you're. Mr. Early?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Irving? Dr. Testerberry?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.